Good evening, everyone. We will call this regular meeting of the Fargo School Board to order. We do have an agenda in front of us. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the agenda as provided in our packet.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion as a second. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay. All in favor, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. We will proceed with the agenda for the evening. Recognition of the audience. There hasn't been nobody that has signed up to address the board tonight. But thank you for everybody who is in our audience and watching us online. Staff reports. We will start with David Markort from the FEA.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markort. Superintendent Report. Dr. Gandhi.
Sure. So I think similar to the FEA as well. I don't have much of a report. I think a lot of the work the administration's been focusing on will be in conversation today and is on the agenda for discussion. So we look forward to those conversations.
Okay. We're moving at a fast pace here, guys. Senior high exit surveys. Dr. Gandhi, would you like to make introductions?
Sure. So every year, we conduct senior high exit surveys, and that's an annual report that we provide to our Board of Education. Our principals take a rotation, and they come present every year. So I will hand it over to Mr. Dolan, and I see Dr. Birch and Mr. Cody are in the back as well. So I will hand it over to Mr. Dolan.
Well, thank you. They told me earlier that they would flank me on each side, so I don't see them, which is typical. But they also consider themselves, "I can't." Oh, here they come. Cool. Appreciate that. You know that each year that we survey our seniors, and we are gathering this information at the end of the school year. Woodrow also does a senior exit survey, and I think at another time, you'll hear the results of that. This evening, I know you've got a very full agenda, so we've kept it brief, but we're surely willing to entertain any questions that you might have. I think the first slide that's on the screen there is what our seniors' graduation plans. And I did a three-year history of the results. By the way, I started this project this morning, and so you'll see the data there. It's good data. It's not made up. And about 70% of our students over the last three years are going and plans to go off to college. Another two-year Volk Tech option is about 16%, and then a few are going to the military, and then, of course, some to work and others. Any questions on your graduation plans? Pretty consistent. If you plan on going to college, where will you be going? 56% of our kids are planning to go to schools in North Dakota in-state, and another 43.85% were going out-of-state. And you've seen some changes, but I don't know if that would be significant from 2017-18 or from 2016-17. Oh, looks like I got an error. 16-17 is the last column header there. Again, percentage of kids there. I created a Wordle. That's where when we survey students, they identify where they're going to school. And so the larger or the more frequent the response, the larger the font is for that institution. So NDSU is where most, many of our kids will go. Second is UND. And last year, NDSCS was our third option, which to me was a little bit surprising. M-State and MSU were about tied. And then, of course, we have some kids go to Concordia and then Valley City State as well. But again, that's a fairly significant trend with regards to more of our kids staying in town and also going to UND. I think part of that is that Division One status. I think over the time when the colleges went to Division One, more of our kids are staying in the state than previously. Again, this is reflective of just last year's data. If they go into the workforce, you know, most of the kids are staying in Fargo. The other option was in Minnesota, but out of the area, 10%. And I think that's why the 21% or the what's in green there is other, because I'm sure that some kids are going to work in Morehead. But it said in the survey, "in Minnesota, out of the area." So I think you'd have to interpret that as somewhere further away than just Morehead. But again, most of our kids would be staying local. Another thing that I captured there was students feeling safe at school. And again, we have four possible answers there, strongly agree, agree, or disagree. And so you can see 79% of our kids strongly agree or agree that they feel safe at school. Some disagree, and maybe some slight trend there with regards to a decrease in feeling safe. I think you can see that nationally as well. Of course, just last week, we had that thread at North High School where somebody had scribbled on an art desk, you know? And so again, when those things happen, I think kids have some apprehensions about coming to school. Again, this is results of just seniors. So over four years, did they ever feel anxious about coming to school? And there's some drilled-in data where, you know, where the places where kids feel less safe, you know, it would be in hallways, in bathrooms. Again, you know, all of our schools spend time and effort with our staff being visible in the hallways and so forth. But again, bathrooms are a location where, at least at North High, its data reflects that it's not as, not as safe as it is in other locations. They feel very safe in the classroom, but not as safe in other areas that are less supervised. Again, a good report here with regards to feel academically challenged at this school. And I think you're aware that both North and South have been a part of that NIMZI grant for the last, for me, it was the last three years, and for Todd, he's into his third year. Again, challenging our students to be taking more advanced placement classes. So we have a rich curriculum offerings there at Davies, at South, and at North, and more of our kids are taking those AP classes. I think Davies traditionally has a lot of kids taking it, and we're right there as well as long as, as well as South. And again, more of our kids are also taking that AP exam. Before the NIMZI project, we really were averaging between 60 and 80 kids taking the AP exam. And I think last year, we had 280 kids take the AP exam. So it was really, has pushed kids in the right direction for taking more advanced placement classes. We've even added some classes in that AP realm as well. We've added AP Stats and AP Environmental Science in the last few years. Again, another slide here is my teachers have high expectations for me. Again, you see the data there. What is that, 87% of them believe that they have strongly agree or agreed to having high expectations, which is really critical for student performance. Again, a good, strong trend. You know, and I thought that was interesting as I was looking at the data today and reviewing it. The data is consistent, really, for the last three years. You can't say that there's much difference there in that data that's up on that screen or any one of the other screens, really. So we've got a strong tradition of great schools in the metro area and North, South, and Davies being a part of that as well. And so it's good to have high expectations. It's good to have kids feel safe, but I think it's really a strong reflection on our district. This is an outstanding result here, number of adults who know me well. I think Todd told me as we were coming in today, if you gather the data from two or more people that know you very well in your school, I think you said 92% of our kids feel like they have two or more adults that know them well. And in some cases, you have more than five. And so a good, strong connection with students here and with adults. All of our schools do some things with culture, whether it's retreats or whether it's other assemblies that we have, partnerships that we have with police, partnership that we have with PTAs, and all that really makes a difference in how we are seen as a school. So I think that comes to our conclusion. Bob told me to keep it brief because he had a full agenda, so I kept it brief. So, but we're willing to entertain any questions that you might have.
Brandy?
So you said you were kind of shocked with NDSCS being third. Why?
Well, I think part of it is that I know why it happens, sort of, is that we do take some field trips down there. In fact, September 24th, I think it's a Thursday, we're taking kids to colleges across the area. We're taking buses to NDSCS. We're taking buses to Concordia, to MSU, UND, military. And so, and kids are walking over to NDSU. And so I think that's part of it, just to get that exposure. We have a very strong vocational tech program in our district, so some of our kids are just naturally going to gravitate towards that as well. So I think that's part of it is just, but it still surprised me that it was as even with, in third place, really, you know?
I might add, I might add, at least at Davies, we have 11 classes that are offered through the dual credit programming, where a student could take the class not only for high school credit, but dual credit. And our partnership is very strong in that regard with North Dakota State College of Science. They have a really nice footprint. And then I also would add, this is the first year that we'll offer dual credit at Valley City. That wouldn't be speaking to this, but through the Intro to Teaching class is also a dual credit class. So maybe not as shocking, but that might be a response as to why North Dakota State College of Science gets that many people saying that that's where they're going to attend.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Thank you for the information again. And I'm curious in regard to when you were talking about safety and the spaces in our schools where the kids feel they're safer in some areas than others, and so some of that drilled-down data. Is it possible for us to receive that? And if that's part of this report, I'm not sure. But I'd be interested in, in taking a look at that and receiving information down the road about what we do with that data, how we use that data. No doubt that it, that we work to help to make changes so that our students feel even safer, but I'd like to see some of that information at some point.
Well, we could easily give you the survey link, and you could spend many hours taking a look at the data. There's, I think it's 33 pages of data. But it does drill down into where kids feel safe and where they're feeling unsafe and whether it's strongly agree or disagree and so forth. Yeah. I'll share that link with Bob, and you'll share it with you guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I don't have a question. I think I just wanted to recognize all of our high school principals. One of the requirements that we have under the Every Student Succeeds Act is to report on how choice-ready our students are. And choice-ready is defined by students that are prepared either for any post-secondary institution, whether it's a four-year or two-year, or the military, or the workforce. And all three of our schools have been recognized as leaders in the state for the amount of students that we have that are graduating that meet the threshold of being choice-ready schools. And I know that Fargo Public Schools, having all of our comprehensive high schools, would kind of be recognized for that, are, are some of the leaders in the state. So I just want to extend my kudos to our high school principals, that I know that they're doing a tremendous amount of work around that. We talk about just unique experiences and sharing our stories. Last year, the state of North Dakota put out a publication recognizing high school seniors that I think had a perfect score on, on one of their assessments, and no one from Fargo Public Schools was recognized. And we had phone calls going off the chain about, can we contact DPI and what's happening? And we reached out to DPI, and they said, "We're only recognizing seniors. Everyone from Fargo Public Schools hit the threshold as sophomores and juniors." So it was just an interesting story. They said, "Just wait a year, and they'll be recognized next year as well." So it just kind of speaks to the great work of all of our high school principals.
Thank you. Well, it's really a credit to your teaching staff. I mean, the teachers that do the stuff on the ground level really makes the big difference. So appreciate all that they do.
Thank you. I see no further hands. Could you please remind me what the acronym of NIMZI is?
National Math Science Institute.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all you do, gentlemen. We look forward to this report every year. Have a great year.
Thank you.
Jim, you look real sharp this evening.
Oh.
I was hoping I could.
With the Davies vest on. Yes. Thanks, Mr. Cody. Onto our summer school report. Again, Dr. Gandhi, would you like to make introductions?
Sure. Like every other year, we run a fantastic summer school program here at Fargo Public Schools. Today, you'll hear about our elementary and high school summer school program, and I believe at our next board meeting, you'll get to hear about the Trollwood Academy summer program as well. So to just go through the elementary and high school program, I will ask Rebecca Folden and David Berkman to come up, and then they will introduce the rest of their team as well.
Good evening. Good to be here tonight. Traditional starting, thanks for another wonderful picnic in the end of the summertime that celebrates with summer staff. Always good food, lots of laughs, and the thanks that you see on the people, especially in the trenches getting our schools ready for summertime, is very much appreciated. One other thank you and shout-out to superintendents and the school board is, I think summer school is where alternative education becomes the norm. And one normally doesn't think that summer school is alternative education, but when we're doing a four-and-a-half-hour class for 15 days for a half-credit, that is very alternative in terms of our setup. So we thank you, thank you for the support of alternative education, and tonight, we're talking summer school within that realm of alternative education. I'll just briefly hit a couple of highlights. So regular school year, 23 sites; summer school, 18 sites. Our summer school staff, we have about 250 staff in all programming that make summer school happen. So it is, it is very, very broad spread across the district. I think the last piece, I'll say, is we had 5,000 successful, 5,012 successful seat opportunities completed this summer. That would mean that an opportunity was offered and a student successfully completed it. May have been a volleyball camp, may have been sixth-grade remedial reading, may have been physical science, but 5,012 successful completions. As you can see on the projection, the administrators responsible for each of the programs is going to give the overview of the specific program that, over which, over which they see. So Becky's up with elementary.
So I am Becky Folden. I am the principal at Clare Barton Hawthorne during the regular school year. And in the summer, I think this is just shy of 10 years that I have been leading summer school at the elementary level. I'm going to kind of go in flip-flop order from what's on there. We're going to start a little bit with transitions. You have a packet that you picked up. So starting on page two, we're going to talk a little bit about transitions. Transitions is three weeks in July. It is in July because the data tells us that having a midsummer program is the most beneficial to students. This is a program that's offered to students who may need a little bit of extra support in the area of reading or math, or it could be reading and math. You can see on page two, there's a variety of options. It's a four-hour program, so it's either four hours of reading, four hours of math, or it's split two and two, two hours of each. And there's a huge amount of ways that they can qualify for summer school. This is a state-funded program, so there is a criteria, and it's teacher-referred. It's not something that anyone can just say, "I simply want to do this." This is something that they have to qualify and show the need for. So there's a variety of ways that they can show. Some are just simply based on their progress. If it's a title school, they automatically can have every student qualify. And then if you flip to page three, you'll see some more specific information there. With our split campuses, they choose one location to host students. So HMR attended at Roosevelt, CBH attended at Hawthorne. Students have to have finished kindergarten and successfully be going into first grade in order to attend. This is a little different in the summer. Parents can choose any school. So if my daycare in the summer is not my typical school that I go to during the school year, but I'm going to FYC or I'm going somewhere else, they can choose anywhere they want to attend. Dates were July 8th through the 26th, and basically, a parent just has to have a Fargo address in order for them to qualify to come to the Fargo Public Schools. So we had many locations this year. Lincoln and Longfellow were closed due to construction. So this pro, this process starts in February. And so at conference time, our teachers are talking with parents and referring students for this. We get many that register, and then by the time July comes around, you can see the numbers that actually attended drop quite a bit. This is a free program, so there's nothing that will happen if they, if they drop the program. So we lose over 100 to 150 students every year from the time they register to the time the program starts. Last year, or excuse me, this year, we had 616 registered with 502 actually attending. I'd say one of the biggest hiccups that kind of come with this is there is no transportation in the summer. So our families are expected to transport, and being an eight-to-noon program, sometimes that can be difficult for families to get their child to school, and so that is a little bit of a hinder for our program. This year, and you'll see when we get to the last page, transitions numbers went down, and specifically, we lost a lot of students at Jefferson this year. But it's kind of a good thing because Lori will talk a little bit about a new program they started at Jefferson for EL Summer School. And so we're sharing those kids, and it just happened that those kids were better qualified for her program, so you'll see that those numbers are offset a little bit. Then in, on page four, in the month of June, it's a week after school is done, we start the enrichment summer school. And I kind of think of these as classes that are just fun, and, and some of our teachers have just a passion to go back and teach. We have staff from the high school level through the elementary level that are teaching. So it's fun to bring some of our high schools down to the elementary level to do French or to do something unique, and so it's kind of fun for them. Again, this is three weeks long. They're two hours apiece. The class costs $75, and there were 20 sessions offered this summer. Again, we had students from all over: Morehead, Nativity, Oak Grove, West Fargo. We had some out-of-state schools. Our students come to attend. And then you can see at the bottom of page four, on page five are the variety of different classes that we offered. Every year, we have some new classes, and this summer, STEM or STEAM classes were kind of, kind of the big push. And so we had a variety of classes in that area, and they're very well-received. And so on the very pay, on page six, you will see that we started with 218 that registered and 212 actually completed and attended. And we're very lucky that the foundation has given us, we, I write a grant every year so that students that can't afford to tend, to attend, have the opportunity, and, and so that's offered every year as well. Any questions about those two programs?
Rebecca?
Well, I've, I think we've heard this more than once about the transportation issue regarding the, the transitions program. So I'm just hoping that down the road, we can have some additional conversations about that, especially considering it's a, a teacher, you know, it's a recommended program for these students. And so that, it doesn't feel right to me. And so I would hope that we have conversations about and look at ways that we can provide some assistance in that area.
And I would definitely say, when I get the phone calls of why they're dropping over 50% is transportation. I thought I could make it work, and now I can't. And, and I do have to say, you know, the numbers on the back show some of these programs, or specifically transitions, is slowly dropping in numbers. But I think we've also gotten really good. We've worked very closely with Extended School Year, which will come up, and now with EL, who's doing some great programs, that we've really made sure to make sure that kids are in the right program. We've added a lot of programs that weren't previously there, and so now we're really feeling good that kids are in the right program to help them. And so numbers are changing a little bit, but it's not necessarily a bad change where we're offering what they need.
Thank you for your service, and it's not a criticism at all on, on what you're doing. I just wonder, what kinds of conversations do we need to be having to help bridge the gap?
It's been the struggle for the 10 years that I've been leading it, so, yep.
Thank you, Ms. Folden. I think that that might be some type of legislative conversation that we can have as well. I know transportation is not required to be offered through the state, but that does not mean that dollars should not be sought in the interim and during the session. So thank you. Go ahead.
Blue? All right. It's not red. It's blue. I'm here to talk about the high school, sort of changing gears, going from elementary all the way up to high school, high school sports camps, academics, and then the middle school music programs. I'll start with the academic pieces. We have a lot of course offerings. We offer a full range of English, a full range of math, a full range of social studies courses. We also offer physical science as a science class. History has taught us that other science classes are not well-attended. So we don't offer other sciences, but we do offer the physical science. We also offer a health class, which is very popular. We offer ROTC, a week-long summer leadership school camp, where they are off at summer camp for a week, which is great for them. We offer the behind-the-wheel experience for the driver's ed. We offer marketing. We offer work co-op experiences. We offer PE. So a lot of academic course opportunities for our students. The classroom opportunities are primarily at South High School. We do offer shuttle bus, both from North and from Davies, so students in those neighborhoods can hop on the shuttle bus and arrive at South High on time and get to their classes. We also spread the PE out across all three of the big high schools so that everybody has local access to FIAED opportunity. The structure of the classes, as David mentioned, it's a 15-day, four-and-a-half-hour superblock for the academics. PE is a two-and-a-quarter-hour experience for the whole 30 days. So when a student does PE, they're making a major commitment for 30 days to do FIAED. They can't miss very many days, or they lose the credit. Any questions about the academic piece? Okay. Athletic camps, which are on page eight. We reach out to all the coaches at the high schools, ask them what they would like to offer for a summer program. And different coaches choose to set it very differently, but we facilitate that with them. Some camps go as young as first and second graders. Some coaches focus only on the high school. Some camps are many, many weeks long. Some are just a couple of days. So it's really highly variable what that experience looks like depending on the sport and the coach's preference. And there's information about what we did offer in here. I won't read that. We also offer a middle school music program, intermediate band, and then also orchestra. Band was at North High this year. Orchestra was at Men Franklin. The hope is to be able to move back to Discovery now that that facility is nearing completion. Questions about those programs? Okay. Then I'm going to direct you to page 13, which has the numbers. I know you guys like numbers. So the numbers, in terms of enrollments, fairly stable academic number, very consistent the last couple of years. PE down a little bit. I'm not sure why that is. Marketing, consistent. It's a small program. Driver's ed is down quite a bit, and the reason for that is we had a number of instructors retire, move on, so we had fewer opportunities, fewer classes that were available. If we could have found another driver's ed teacher, we would have kept them very, very busy. So that's, that's why that number is down. Sports camp's a very consistent number, again, hitting about 1,500. So lots of academic and sports opportunities for students. Questions? Comments? All right. I'll toss it to Erin then.
Hi, I'm Lori Nappi, and I am proud to be part of the summer admin team. We had a something, a program, a pilot program that came from the teachers. They wanted to see if they could do a six-week program, which is what Becky Folden was speaking to. We stole a few of her students. We had transportation for the first three weeks, and then the second three weeks, we did not. So we have a grant that provides transportation, but it only lasted for three weeks. So when you're taking that up, we'd appreciate, we would greatly appreciate that. So this is being done during the school year, and a few of our teachers had taken the training and said, "I'd like to see how this works with the summer." And it's a Jan Richardson model, and if you know, reading recovery is one-on-one intensive intervention. This is for a small group, like three to six students. So they're getting the same kind of two hours of intensive intervention within their four-hour day. The teachers select books and writing activities that are very specific to each child's reading and writing needs. So the teachers spend a lot more time after school, making sure that each student has the book that is perfect for them to move into. Like I said, it was a six-week program that yielded an average of student gains from two to four levels of reading. So the part, parts of the program, we called it the rotation station. They have guided reading activities with the teacher. So it's, the teacher is having them expand their sentences, you know, use descriptive language. Guided reading with the teacher who has selected a book that is specific to the student's needs. They have a read-to-self, either rereading a familiar book or previewing a new one. The free play activity- The free play activities were, you know, we let the kids play, but it was all STEM activities. They're making bridges, they were making things that would doodle from one spot to the other, so it was, even though it was, you get to use your imagination and it's free play, it was getting them ready for when they're a little bit older and doing STEAM activities. And this is my favorite picture of the summer, when the students had a little happy Fourth of July celebration. And one note that I am very proud to tell you is we had a fifth-grade teacher join us for EL, EL summer school, and she happens to be at the same school that I am, and she said, I'm ready to get my graduate degree and I'm going to do it in EL, will you help me? And I'm like, yeah, I snagged one, yay! Any questions for me at all? I just want to thank you again for supporting our EL students in the summer.
My name is Erin Clusa, and this is my first year getting to support summer school this summer. I'm usually during the school year strategist at Edcliff Elementary. One of the roles that I was able to take on this summer was supporting our remedial math and reading classes. We were at three sites this summer, Ben Franklin, Carl Ben, and then Centennial because Discovery was under construction. We serve 78 students with the goal of boosting or maintaining re, reading and math skills. You also have a side goal of re-engaging students. These students are usually our most at-risk students that were just trying to reconnect and hopefully get them in on a successful path to start possibly transferring those skills to the fall of the school year. Which leads me to a story I wanted to share with all of you. We had a student end last spring who was homebound because of a medical procedure that was performed. He was really having trouble getting back into the flow of school in the spring, but he had signed up for summer school. We didn't anticipate that he would come, and it was a huge celebration when we saw him there. And not only did he come, he came every single day except for the last day. I was making rounds to the different sites and noticed he wasn't there. When I talked to the teachers that were at the site, they had already called home, they'd already made connection with him and his mom, and he was on his way because they did not want him to miss that last day, they were doing a celebration, because they wanted to make sure that that success continued into the fall. I checked his attendance today just because I was curious to see what he was doing. He hasn't missed a single day and he hasn't been tardy one time. So he left off in the spring with some struggles and started this fall, and he's off to a great start. Another area that I support is Extended School Year. I work with Alice Wimkin, supporting our special education students. So this is just a snapshot of the students that we had registered compared to the students that we have attending. Unlike the challenge that Becky faces with transportation, we do provide transportation to all of our special education students. So we do have a little bit higher attendance numbers. Another part of why we have a little bit more consistent registered to attendance is that these students are selected through their IEP teams every spring. So case managers, parents, administrators sit down and determine if the student meets qualifications to extend their school year. The format of Extended School Year, we did this year Tuesdays and Thursdays, we supported students with their academic needs, and then Wednesdays, we supported their social skills needs. For some students, that meant attending all three days because they needed support in all areas, and for some it just meant a Tuesday, Thursday schedule, or maybe just a Wednesday schedule. So the teachers were really able to narrow the support they were providing the students. All of our ESY sites this year received milk and breakfast or snack in the mornings, thanks to the work of Sydney Hodgson and Nutrition Services. And also at South, CBE, and our ELD sites, we were also able to provide lunch along with the breakfast and milk. So a big celebration that came out of Nutrition Services. Just some pictures from ESY this year. We're really working on trying to build more connections with the community for these students. So we tried to bring more opportunities to them. We were able to connect with Diamond and the Rough and bring some service animals on-site. We were able to get more adaptive music teachers at each site. They were able to watch Beauty and the Beast rehearsals, the students really enjoyed that. A lot of sites worked on some gardening projects, we did a lot of STEM activities, lots of hands-on collaborative learning. And then, of course, Slime, which is a huge hit with our students. Any questions about middle school or Extended School Year for our special education students? Thank you.
Jennifer Free was unable to be here tonight, and she did extend an invitation to the board if you would ever want to have an ALC presentation, not only for summer school, but during the school year, she said, let her know, and she'd be happy to, to come and give a, a presentation. So, like I said, well over 250 staff, 18 buildings, 5,000 completions. Tremendous team from teacher to parent to the, the admin teams at work. Great opportunity for our students.
Any other questions for Mr. Berkman? I think I need to note that 5,012 students are almost half of our population of Fargo Public Schools. I, I realize those were unduplicated numbers, but it really goes to show you that school does not stop when it lets out in the spring. Our schools are busy all year round, so thank you for your work. Very impressive, very important for our students to achieve and succeed. Have a great evening. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Jim?
I move adoption of the consent agenda as provided in our packet.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all that vote in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Okay, we will move forward, those items have been approved. Business, health insurance recommendation is our first item. Rupak, who would you like to introduce that? Jennifer is absent tonight, she is the board liaison, so Jackie has raised her hand. Thank you, Jackie.
I will introduce because the person who will be presenting is a member of my team. So Karen Hallarung is here, and she is currently in charge of the Health Insurance Committee, and she will be bringing forth to you the recommendation of that committee for insurance rates effective January 1st.
Hello, everybody, good evening. I am Karen Hallarung, and I'm the Purchasing Specialist at the District Office, and I'm also the Chair for the Health Insurance Committee. On the Board Memo 31, that's in front of you, the committee has made recommendations to the board in regards to our plans, and I'm just going to briefly go through what we have put together for you to review. The first part is to remain with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota as our health plan carrier. Convert the Select Choice Plan to Classic Blue with an open access network. Increase the health insurance funding level at an overall rate of 13.9%. 17% premium increase to Classic Blue, which is the traditional plan. 7% premium increase to the Blue Saver, the high deductible health plan. The increase to employee cost share would be 6.75% to Classic Blue and 2.5% to Blue Saver. We'd, we'd maintain, recommendation would be maintain the health savings account employer contribution levels that we already have, and then no change in our plan design. As you can see at the table below, it shows the 10-months premium and the adjustment cost sharing from calendar 2019 and what it would look like in calendar 2020. The back page also shows the premium change for the monthly rate. We also wanted to make sure that when we were putting this recommendation together that we kept the overall costs for the plan for the employer at a 5.1% rate increase for the budget.
Thank you for your report. Is there anybody that would like to discuss any employment or conflict of interest at this point? They need to be stated for the record?
Yeah, President Nelson, per our policy GP 3E and North Dakota Century Code 15.1-07-17, and also Century Code 44-04-22. I'm going to disclose a conflict of interest this evening and will abstain from participating in any discussion or votes in this plan, including the recommendations here tonight. My conflict is that I'm employed by Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota, and while I'm not an officer of the company involved in plan contents, pricing, or servicing of claims, I do believe that that is clearly a conflict of interest.
Thank you for that disclosure. Please note, as, as far as this conflict of interest with contracts, the board can unanimously approve, John, to participate and vote in this conversation. So I, if there are any motions that would like to come forth at this time? Okay. We do have a presentation on the floor. I, I have a quick question before we get started with conversation. Can you give me a sampling of who serves on the Health Insurance Committee, please?
Sure. We have, well, it's a select group, which we try to convince or secure. They come from admin, our maintenance, nutrition services, we got teachers, staff on it, and I think overall there is 12 to 15 people that are represented on, on the committee.
Very good, thank you. We do have a recommendation in front of us. Jim?
I, I'm going to recommend that we approve the Health Insurance Committee's recommendation begrudgingly, but just because of the size of the increase our employees are going to see, but I understand we're trying to keep our plan fiscally solvent as well. So I will move that we adopt the Health Insurance Committee's recommendations as outlined in Memo 31.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Discussion or questions? David?
I too share Jim's concern about how much the increase to the employees was. Was, can you tell me a little bit about what kind of discussions came up to possibly reduce that amount? You're looking at a $227 a month increase, it's over 10 months rather than 12 months, right?
Right.
It's 10, 10.
Based on payroll.
So you're looking at a $2,200 increase to a, a family policy for our employee.
Under the traditional plan, yes.
Under the traditional.
We, we extensively had quite a bit of conversation and looked at different modelings as far as what we could do for the employees. And when we went to the last meeting, we had two options, and there was this last option that would make the traditional plan become positive instead of losing money in the fund. And over the last 10 years, we presented to the group that we went from 12 million down to 3 million. And as a group, we want to make sure that we're going to be solvent and have that self-funded health insurance plan. So we'd like to get at a six-month buffer or enough money in there so that we will continue to have a self-funded insurance plan. I know it's a lot, I mean, a lot of people on the committee, you know, struggled with it. But overall, you know, the people still have a choice. They can either stay on the plan or go to the high deductible.
Thank you. I know many employers are at the mercy of the actuarials, so thank you for your work on this. Jennifer Benson is not here, she is the board liaison to the Health Insurance Committee, and she is urging that we, we receive some education on self-funded plans. I know a lot of discussion was on the solvency of the self-administered insurance plan as well, and there's some efforts there. We discussed it at planning briefly, but I think that's a great suggestion because it's not orthodox for many people to be part of a self-funded plan. Do we have any other questions? David?
Thank you. I have one other question, you brought up the Blue Saver, and that only in, that increased less than $70 per month, or per, in the 10 months. What kind of a shift are you seeing in the numbers?
I don't have that in front of me, but when we put this proposal together, Gallagher did put like a mitigation as far as how many people may come from the Classic Blue over. And the last, I say, what is it, three or four years we've had the plan, we're a lot higher in numbers of people on the Blue Saver than most employers, please, employers that have. So overall, I don't know the actual percentage, but I mean, we're pretty good. I mean, we've seen the mitigation from 10, and I'm not sure if we're up to like, I can't say for exactly, I don't want to say we're at 20 and then come to find out we're at 15, so I could check into that and get back to you.
Thank you. Another question, what kind of employer, what, what type of employee would this be more beneficial to the Blue Saver? Younger, singles, no children, older, children out of the house? What?
I'm on the Blue Saver. And when this came to us as far as a choice for health insurance, it, I mean, I did studies, I, you know, ran numbers, and that's the big thing is to take a look at your usage and what you may have coming up as far as any health costs. And when I ran numbers, I went, okay, we ended up paying out $8,000 on the traditional plan, and if I go to the high deductible, we're only, for a family, $6,000. I said, I'm saving $2,000, you know, I'm guaranteed, you know, that this is what my cost's going to be for the year. I'm not guessing, well, if I flex this much, am I going to have enough money? So it could be anybody's, you know, just depends. A lot of single people could benefit from it. There are some people that are not able to be on the Blue Saver, as far as if you're on Medicare, you know, just depends on your situation.
I hate to.
No, it's okay.
Keep burdening you. Would education on the Blue Saver on, you know, so people better understood the advantages, would that help if, if we were to, you know, have classes available or whatever, meetings to explain the Blue Saver? It seems, I, I've studied it too, and it seems like the way to go. It really does.
A lot of people are apprehensive or the fear of what if, you know, am I, you know, am I going to be able to make it on this plan? But, you know, once I moved over, over to it, I looked back and went, I should have done this sooner. I'm glad I did it when I did. We do educational plans on it, I mean, there's information out on our portal. We have Gallagher come in on open enrollment and give different classes at least two or three times, you know, during open enrollment at different schools and, you know, explain to them that, you know, here's a scenario for someone. But I think a lot of it's going to have to do with, you know, personal, how, you know, someone else like myself talking to, you know, another employee or somebody else, and that word gets out, and they're like, oh, you know, maybe I need to take a look at that and see what it would benefit me or not.
Jackie, follow-up?
I'll just add to that. The committee has, they did last year purchase a subscription to a tool called Alex, which will walk an individual through the process to determine what may be best for them. So I think the committee is looking at, you know, really trying to get that message back out there again. There will be a lot of interest probably in looking to switch this year, based on, on what we're seeing. But hopefully that tool will be a guide then to help people make the right decision for themselves.
Okay, I see no further hands, we have a motion on the floor. And Anne Marie, if you would like to do a roll call with the abstention of Mr. Rodenbiker.
Anni?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
President Nelson?
Yes, motion carries. The next item on our.
I just want, can I just say thank you for everybody? I'll bring this back to our next meeting for the Health Insurance Committee and let them know that you guys did pass this, so thank you very much. This was my first time presenting, and I have a feeling I'll be doing it again, so kudos, thanks.
Thank you, it was very informational and well-explained, we appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is 6B, possible executive session. I would entertain a motion.
President Nelson, I move we enter executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy and attorney consultation as permitted under North Dakota Century Code, Section 44-04-19.1.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Okay, we will. Okay. We will go into executive session here. We will take a break for our video and audio to get upset, so we'll set up, so we will reconvene at 6:25.
Okay. We will call this meeting of the Board of Education into special executive session. It is 6:27 PM on September 10th. Board members present are Brian Nelson, Brandy O'Neale, Chrissy Ulrich, Jim Johnson, David Paulson, John Rodenbiker, Rebecca Knudsen, and Robin Nelson. Cabinet members present are Dr. Gandhi, Anne Marie Campbell, Jackie Gatz, Doug Andrigs, Missy Eisen, Dr. Gross, and Jo Lynn Mather is present as well. Just before we get started, as you are all aware, I was served some papers about a week or so ago, and we are providing those papers tonight. I'm not quite sure how this conversation will go tonight, but I wanted to provide everybody, have you read first of all, first of all, five minutes of Mr. Markhor's affidavit that will kind of give you a tone of where this conversation is going. And then at that point, we will visit with our attorney over the phone. He will make some introductions, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of time to read. Now, here's what I'm going to say in this, and I'm learning a lot as I go through this. Any notes that you make on these items need to be preserved. There's a preservation clause, so keep in mind that these can be, I think, subpoenas, if you will. So be careful and cognizant of what you write and the notes that you take for anything regarding this topic. So let's give us about five minutes to read the first couple pages, and then we'll try to give a highlight from there. Okay, board members, you have had a chance to read Mr. Markhor's affidavit. The other items that are included in your package are the exhibit items that were presented by the FBA legal team, as well as a petition for a writ of mandamus, which I now know what that means, and alternative writ of mandamus, which is basic mandamus means, requiring mandating that we follow the law. As you know, today, or as of Monday morning, we were notified that the FBA did indeed file this petition and the alternative writ, what had a court order. I will assume that Seth, our legal advice, will walk us through that. Just so you also know, and for the record, there was a press release by Fargo Education Association today, and to my knowledge, they are on a talk show right now that was arranged yesterday, so you might want to take a look at that. And that's all the information I have at this point. So I will turn it over to Seth, and if you want to make some introductions, the, most of the board is here with the exception of one member, Jennifer Benson. And I am going to let you leave this because I'm not quite sure what to do, but David Paulson does have his hand raised, so I will let him ask a question.
I'm wondering why we're allowing outside parties to call in and call these parties to accept this. Or do we need that board to, 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 to?
Yes. We, that was discussed last Friday, and John, or administration that was present, please let me know, this, we, since this is legal counsel, we have confidence that they will adhere, excuse me, adhere to the North Dakota Century Code on this issue. Dr. Gandhi?
Sure. And I know Seth is going to do introductions. When these papers were shared with the board president, we had reached out to our commissioner of the conference, who worked with us during town, our lawyer that we normally work with for personal issues, referred us to Mr. Thompson, and they were both part of a communication with our negotiations chair and our board president. And Mr. Thompson has kind of created a free committee area and is able to speak to that so he can be taken lead in those situations. And when we had arranged, made arrangements, he is located out of Bismarck, and when we had made arrangements to speak tonight, we had this exact conversation about executive session. I know that Mr. Thompson is able to cite some century courts, some past examples, that it is allowed, this conversation is protected under attorney-client privilege, and that I think at that point, the free committee has provided us, we have helped to keep the public agency full of, so that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you, David. I ask the same question, Rebecca. I just have a question, clarifying question regarding any notes that we might take. Does this information need to be handed in at the end of this meeting, or do we need to keep that for on our own? I believe you can keep it, but you need to keep it on file. It is public record, but your notes are not at this point. Okay. If you would like to make some introductions, we would, you have the mic.
All right. Well, thank you very much. My name is Seth Thompson. I'm an attorney with the Volga Law Firm, and I specialize in labor relations. In a prior career, I used to manage a labor union in the Red River Valley, and as an attorney, I represent its lawyers exclusively. And I also know that you're not here to talk about me here, kind of interested in what this legal issue you have in front of you is, so I can go ahead and dive into that. But as we go through this, by all means, I expect to interject, ask questions, those sorts of things, and, you know, we can walk through those sorts of questions that you have. So what has unfolded is after the board declared impasse and we took steps to get a mediator, the union filed what's called a petition for a writ of mandamus, which is a strange name, but really is, as the president noted, it's a legal method to try and get a public entity or board to do something. And here, what they're trying to do is they're using this as a mechanism to try and get you to go back to the bargaining table. And with the filing was the application for a temporary restraining order to just kind of get the parties to freeze everything where it's not, yeah, did not take a whole lot of, not take any action. These were granted, I think, late on Friday, and we got notice of them on Monday. I'm not surprised that they were granted based on the filings. At this point, there's a lower standard to get the court to grant this at this point, but that does not mean that we've done anything wrong or that we have any sort of losing argument or anything like that. What it does mean is, and you can see in the petition, the court has said, okay, the options in front of you right now are to continue to go back and bargain with the union, or there's a public hearing set on October 3rd in district court at 1:30 in which we can present our legal arguments to why, why the overall petition of PRO should not be granted. Moving forward with that option, we would be, should that be the method of support to, to, we would be filing legal briefs, some affidavits, documents, and all of those sorts of things, five days prior to the actual hearing. And then the hearing is, I don't want to completely say it's a trial, but it's just an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses and do different things at the hearing. The standard for the court to give this relief that's being asked is a rather high standard. The petitioning party has to show that they have a clear legal right to the relief that they're requesting, that there's no other adequate remedy that they have, and this is kind of their only option to use. And even with that, the court still has the discretion to deny the application of petition for the writ. So really, what they're boiling their claims down to are kind of three separate things. They're alleging that we failed to bargain in good faith, and that's based on statutory codes. They're alleging that we are not at impasse, they impasse based on, again, the North Dakota Century Code. And they're also alleging that there was a breach of contract on the impasse provisions of contracts. And I'll note that I think the, of those three claims, I think the statutory claims are viewed in their eyes are better claims than the breach of contract claims. The judge that we have assigned to the case is Judge Stephen Markhor. He's a well-known gentleman who's been on the bench for quite some time. He's known as a very good and thorough judge, so that is good. So the decision point I think that the board should be considering is what it would like to do. Right now, I, for lack of a better term, the train is kind of on the tracks as far as moving forward towards the hearing with the, moving forward with the declarations of impasse and all of those sorts of things. So I guess I kind of, my understanding would be that if you do nothing, we will, you know, decide not to change that path. We would continue towards the hearing that would be set for October 3rd. At the same time, as the court indicated, you know, in the alternative petition for the writ, there's the option for the parties to go back to the bargaining table, and that is another option that you have. I think if I think if you're going to do that, I think you probably would want to, as I think about this, you wouldn't want to do it now, but take some action because you've already set things in motion with the declarations of impasse and all of those sorts of things. You know, there are considerations, obviously, when you're looking at this. My review of, and I want to be clear, what I have reviewed so far is the filings and everything that you have in front of you right now, and I've had an opportunity to have a conference with the chair, with a member of Roden Biker, and with Dr. Gandhi and some others down. So I have not, this isn't like a comprehensive file review or anything, I've not reviewed proposals, I've not done anything along those lines. Knowing what I know right now, I think you have the upper hand in this, because to show, to show that you are not bargaining in good faith, first off, that's the union's duty to prove that. But what courts look at is the totality of the circumstances. They look at how long you met, how many times you discussed proposals, conduct during those meetings, the things that you went through. We really, for the large part, courts don't look to isolated individual instances. So I think it helps you a lot that you bargained nine, nine different sessions, you know, you talked about the issues and all of that. And I think from what I've noted, the union has indicated one issue was never discussed, and I think that, as I understand the factual circumstances on that, I think what is wanted to it is it was never, never brought forward. So, you know, I think that one is probably more in your favor. But I also, the flip side to all of that is, judges are human, and, you know, there's never a guarantee in a legal process as to what result will happen. I will note that, as the North Dakota Supreme Court has said multiple times, that when a district court judge has a hearing on a petition for a writ of mandamus, the district court's determination is entitled to a very high amount of deference. So while it's appealable, the decision that the district court would make, unless the district court makes some pretty glaring egregious errors, it's probably going to be what the ultimate decision is. And so with that, I mean, there are considerations, you know, that will impact your relationship with the Education Association, you know, I mean, I think it's legitimate to wonder about if you do go back to the bargaining table, will this, will this result in the Education Association feeling oldened and maybe, you know, that sort of thing. That's something that's certainly worth, you know, contemplating. At the same time, other employers that I deal with, albeit not so much in high-profile situations or high-profile bargaining, sometimes will view these situations as, you know what, I am in the right here, but at the same time, I'm also, for lack of a better term, the adult in the room, and I'm going to move this process forward, and if that requires meeting and having more meetings, I will do that. I've seen people take that perspective. So, you know, you have different options in front of you. The one thing I would say is, if you, if you make a decision right now that you would like to go back to the table, you know, and then ultimately do that in the open session, that's entirely fine. But the other thing I would say is, I have not had an opportunity to review all of the information. I think I'm set to get that stuff, I think on Thursday is going to be all coming, once we have it all lined up. You know, if you take no action right now, my intent would be to review all of this, and if, in the course of reviewing it, I determine, oh, we've got some red flags here that we need to address, my, what I would do is I would contact the chair, Dr. Gandhi, and share that with them, and then, you know, I think at that time, I don't know, I suppose possibly a meeting could be held or whatnot. Bringing that up so that you know that I don't have all the information in front of me right now, but you still don't have to make a decision on this at this point right now, should you know that. So, that's kind of, kind of an overview of what we've got going on, and I would absolutely answer any questions that you have, or thought, or if you'd like to discuss that. I would note one thing, just with respect to Board Member Paulson's question earlier at the front of this, there is North Dakota Attorney General's support for having legal counsel on the phone during a public meeting, so there is, there is some precedent and some support for that sort of thing.
Thank you for that overview, Mr. Thompson. I think it should be noted that all negotiation meetings have been recorded with audio, and then I know that there's some transcripts that are being used as well, so those can all be referred to. So let's open this up for discussion. I'm not, I've never done this, so let's see where this goes. Jim?
Um, I'm just wondering if I understood, Mr. Thompson, to our board, you would be in court on October third, and you'd be discussing that, and that I understand you thought, Seth, that you're interested in getting more information from the court, that you would be reviewing sometime after the day, is that correct?
Correct on both parts, sir. The first part is correct, and the second is as well, too. Yep. Well, then, my thought is, we shouldn't take any action until you've had the opportunity to review. I'm assuming it will be transcripts and the audios of those meetings. And we have another meeting scheduled, and it's a time of year we could take that action, which is still in progress. And if at that point in time, the legal counsel decides to, even if one does stand in, and then maybe we decide we're going to court, we may have uncovered some issues, which led to, you know, we may have some issues in court, but at the same time, we may want to discuss, go and have a one go back to the table. But I'm not keen upon it to let him do this for.
Your question?
Um, Mr. Thompson, can you just talk us through what the timeline would be to get everything prepared in the board order two on the twenty seventh, which is when our next meeting is to go before. I know you said everything's to be prepared five days before that date. How long would it take to prepare all the documents?
I'm looking at my calendar right now, so, I think, so if we're looking at the October third, one, two, three, four, five, we're looking at really a filing date of the twenty eighth or so, and I know that's a Saturday. If you, so your board meeting is on, did you say the twenty seventh, or did I hear that wrong, or twenty fourth? Um, candidly, I think it would be a little bit tight, not saying it's not doable, but I think it would, you know, it would... I think we can make that work. Yeah. I can, if you were to, I'll put it to you this way, if I get the documents and I were to determine that the volume of them is more than I anticipated, or something along those lines, I would let you know right away. But I know that Dr. Gandhi and the other folks that have been chatting with were very good in saying, you know, we're going to point you to certain areas where, you know, certain discussions will place on things that will kind of expedite the review and all of that. You know, I think what I would probably do is probably have some rough outline framework of our methods and how we're going to respond to all of this, so that even after you, if you make a decision on the twenty fourth, some of it is in process, but, you know, like getting some of it set up and organized, but not diving directly into it. So I can, I can work with the twenty fourth.
Can you kind of outline what that process might look like? You are going to need documents, I assume you're going to need affidavits, Davids from some board members. Of course, that can be intimidating for some of us, but can you very briefly lay out that process for us, please?
Yes, I think part of what that will also depend on is whether or not we get further clarification from Judge Markwart about what he wants to see at the hearing. A lot of this is done through affidavits and that sort of stuff, but at the same time, there's still the opportunity to have oral testimonies, to cross-examine people, and that sort of thing at the hearing. So if we do determine that there is a need, you know, to do that, that will, that will make the timeline a little bit tight, and I'm going to, we're going to need to do some preparation earlier in that week of the third, in advance of the testimony, with the testimony and all of that. But I think as of right now, a lot of this can be handled by affidavits, and generally, the way we would do it is, I would probably have a discussion with the individuals in advance, so I can get an understanding of what happened, what transpired, and all of that. I would draft up the affidavits, let the, let the individuals review them to make sure that they're accurate and true, and then move forward with that. As for putting the case together, and a lot of it will involve exhibits, you know, the exhibits, the bargaining notes, you know, the transcripts and those sorts of things, and, you know, to the extent that they're largely organized when I get them, that certainly helps. I think we can, that will expedite what we have. Am I kind of answering your question there, President Nelson, if I kind of not getting at it?
No, you are. Angela's matherin is nodding, it's very organized. Do you have any insight, before we let you go, so they are citing Century Code number one off of fifteen point one dash sixteen dash fourteen. They have not mentioned number two. The number one is, an impasse exists if, unless A, B. And then number two is, an impasse may exist, yes. Do you, do you have any opinions or your interpretation of that, that you can align this on, or if I'm putting you on the spot, please tell me to stop?
Well, here's one thing, I think, is, let me take a step back if I could. I think it's important to note that in your current contract right now, you have an impasse provision in Article Two, Section Four, and, or, excuse me, Section Five. That kind of mirrors part of what the impasse statute says, but at the same time, it's not exactly the same. So I think there will be a question in this case about whether or not the impasse procedures that are in your contract were intended to trump or to, for lack of a better term, override what's in the Century Code. I don't think that will be the case. I will note that there are times where parties can bargain over what statutory language says. I don't think that's what we have here. And I also think that the fact that your, the provision in your contract is permissive, and it says, you know, impasse may occur when these criteria are met, so that's kind of, it seems to open the door. As to a little bit more on your question, the chair's question, so I mean, there are two, two real prongs that exist, I guess, on impasse in the statute, and one of them is, kind of as a matter of law, impasse doesn't exist if, you know, both parties agree, or you've negotiated for a period of time and you just can't come to a agreement. And that, that doesn't necessarily require both parties to be on board, but there's also a second provision that kind of is more permissive, again, that, you know, when a written contract, if your contract doesn't involve a procedure for resolving a dispute, that, that you may have an impasse at that point. Does that kind of answer your question a little bit there?
Uh, it's muddy, but thank you. I think, I think I'm following.
And maybe I'm, maybe I'm not diving correctly into it. The one thing I'll note is that a lot of the impasse language that, well, a lot of this section came from a Senate bill that happened in two thousand and one, and a lot of it, you know, normally when you have a Senate bill, you know, you have language back and forth and some strikeouts, and you have some additions, and you can kind of do a little bit better of cracking what the intent or the legislative history behind that language is. This is a little bit different. We pulled the legislative history, and this bill codifying a lot of these procedures in the Century Code were kind of adopted verbatim, based on some work that an interim committee had done during that timeframe. So it's not, it's not as clean of legislative history to show what the intent was as you normally would have.
Thank you, that's helpful.
I have two questions, Mr. Thompson, I think. One is, I do believe that the binder that we're going to share with you is all the material from this legislative session, this negotiation session. Would it be helpful to have, if we can find it, any past documentation of past negotiation sessions where the association unilaterally declared impasse, and it wasn't voted on both, or is that irrelevant at this point? And then my second question is, I know you and I talked about this earlier as well, but just for the good of the board, if they're using bad faith as one of the standards for this legal claim, what is the standard to determine whether any party negotiates in bad faith or not?
Um, good question. And the first question is, yeah, I think that type of information, if you do have that, similarly, if you have information showing in previous bargaining where the district and the union have bargained over this very impasse clause, if you have proposals or any language or any notes from those meetings, I think that would be helpful. Getting to your second question, bargaining in good faith is really going into negotiations with an open mind and being willing to listen to the other side. The North Dakota Supreme Court used the phrase, it's the art of friendly persuasion. It's going in and not having a set determination in your mind that you're not going to reach your contract, or that you're not going to listen to any proposals or accept any proposals. Bargaining in good faith does not require a party to accept a proposal, or to counter, or to do any of those sorts of things. But what it does require is, it does require the parties to contemplate, think about, discuss, it's the, you know, for lack of a better term, it's kind of an old-fashioned debate, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a discussion about what the other party seeks and why they seek it. You know, it's not a, it's looked at in the totality of the circumstances, so, you know, you've got to watch out, it's not necessarily what happens in one instance, it's just the larger conduct of the parties during the process. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Before we go? David, Paulson?
First of all, Seth, the comments I made at the beginning weren't, please don't think they were disparaging toward you. I was just confused by the fact that we had not allowed board members to call in during these executive sessions, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, and, and sir, I didn't take any offense by that. I just, I just wanted to point out, because this was something that had been brought up, just making sure that this was lawful and all of that, but good questions and absolutely no offense taken.
The question I have is, what if the energy is there across the country? I don't see, I don't see what is going to do, yes, going to be advantageous for either side, aside from us being in a state where people like, like, you know. It's going to be very expensive, I know the clock is ticking right now, and I'm very worried, whatever, what's going to happen. It's going to be another large expense versus a pay. I just, I don't know why, I think, Mr. Thompson, you mentioned, you're seeing that the bigger man in the room, and you wish he could accomplish more by telling them you're willing to do this.
And those are legitimate points. You know, I, I think, I think it's important to contemplate what you think the association's next move is going to be, because even if you go back and bargain right now, let's just, to use a hypothetical for you, sir, let's just say you go back and have two, three more sessions, you discuss all of those topics, you bat them back and forth, you do all of those different things, and at the end of the day, the district says, you know, we just can't move any further on these, and this is where we're at. They still have the opportunity and ability to file the exact same petition here that we have in front of them. So if there's, if there's a notion that you, if there's a, I'll put it to you this way, if we believe that we can be successful in getting it resolved, and getting through everything, and getting everything hammered out, I don't think there's a downside to negotiating with them. At the same time, there's also the fact that I think you need to deal At the same time, there's also the fact that I think you need to deal with, that if you do that, it will potentially color your future negotiations where you don't wanna be in a position where you, the union believes that if it files a petition for mandamus, that the board is going to, um, for lack of a better term, cave. And this is something that often comes up, you know, when you're, I mean, this is what we're talking about. We're talking about impasse. You know, I often counsel employers that when you tell them it's the last best and final, it should be the last best and final, because if you then give them something else or you have more to offer them, those sorts of things, it's pretty darn hard to settle a contract in the future because your word of the last best and final doesn't matter. I'm not saying that that is truly, you know, how it always operates, but it, it happens that way a lot. So I absolutely do think cost should be a consideration and, and all of that. But I also think, you know, that should be factored into the relationship as well, too. Do we think that we're going to resolve it? And if the board is inclined to go back to the table, if you are inclined to do that, I think you should have some, some discussions ahead of time with the union that, you know, "Look, we, we seem to be having some fractured relationships here. We're willing to, to work." But when we have nine negotiations that end sessions and you're not putting all your proposals on the table and all of these sorts of things, you know, there's an obligation on behalf of the union to, to put its best foot forward to...
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Uh, I will call on Dr. Gandhi in a minute. I do have to say, we, we need to look at both sides, because what if we do and then we are opening ourselves to, if we don't budge on any of these considerations, uh, we might be decided to be in bad faith again. So, but, but we can discuss that as a board after we dismiss Mr. Thompson. Dr. Gandhi, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I, I think my question was also, um, similar to Dr., uh, Mr. Thompson, but just flipping it a little bit. If the board were to go back to the negotiation table, um, one of the standards, sir, that you said for bad faith would be a predetermined, but if the board were to go back to the, um, negotiation table and say that everything that we've laid out there is our best and final, would that be perceived as bad faith and saying they just came back because of the red mandamus? So if the board has no wiggle room, does that really dictate whether or not they should go back to the table because of the perception?
Good question. If you're gonna go back to the table, I mean, I think what the, when I read the petition and, in reading that, and, and, and also in my phone conversation with Mr. Guireman, I should add that I had a conversation with Mr. Guireman. I, I think part of it is the perception, rightly or wrongly, that they did not get an opportunity to be heard on a number of proposals. Now, I recognize that they've been tabling them and not bringing them forward and all of that. So I, I think the part of going back to the table is, if you're gonna do it, you need to go back with an open mind and contemplate and listen all to all of those proposals. Um, uh, and, and make sure that you're, you may be willing to do something or may not, depending on whether or not you think it's worthwhile. I have seen situations where you declare impasse or you give a last and final offer, but the employer will be willing to say, again, to use another analogy, "Look, there's only so much money in the bucket. I can't put more money in the bucket. But what I can do is we can move around some of it that we already have right now." That's one thing that I often advise employers, if you are going back to the table and you don't wanna paint yourself into a corner where you just, as Dr. Gandhi indicated, you may have problems settling, and I, and I mentioned before, that is one mechanism to do that, to say, you know, "We, there's only a certain cap on how much we are willing to spend in these negotiations." If you wanna move around some of these things, in other words, some of the tentative agreements that we previously have is you wanna back off on some of them, you know, maybe we can do it. That's an option.
Okay. I do know the negotiations committee did have a couple options for spending a certain amount of money, so this would be a good discussion. Any other questions for Mrs. Thom, Mr., now I call them Mrs. Thompson?
That's okay.
Mr. Thompson, before the board deliberates on how to proceed, do you feel like you need to be part of this conversation further?
I'm more than willing, but, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I think we've kind of laid out what we have in front of us. And a lot of this is, really, a lot of this boils down to your relationship with the Education Association, you know. We don't, I don't think we have enough facts in front of us. As I, as I've told you, I think from what I've reviewed so far, you have the upper hand in the argument. But as I've also noted, I've not reviewed everything, so I don't, you know, know that we really know that angle of it. But if you look at, if you wanna look at this from the perspective of your relationship with the Education Association, you know, that's, um, you have intimately more detail about the bargaining that's happened, you know, what happened in previous negotiations and all of that. So while I'm most certainly willing to be here, should you want me to be, I don't, I don't, you know, I, I think, well, if you're gonna stay in executive session, um, well, I, I think it may be, as I think about it, I think if you are going to stay in executive session, um, how have you handled your contract negotiations, um, to give status updates to the board and all of that before? I mean, there is an exception where you don't have to have an attorney involved for that. Is that how you've been proceeding, um, in the past under those?
Correct.
Okay. So I think we're still good there. I, I guess it's up to you, um, to the chair, you know, or to the, to the board. I'm, I'm willing to, to be here to answer questions, but at the same time, um, you know, I think you can have fruitful discussions, um, either way.
Any opinions by the board? Rebecca, you had your, your hand up. I was only trying to clarify in regard to, uh, the century code, Robyn, that you referenced, the, the two parts of century code. Seth, in my, I write, it sounded like the part where it talked about, um, may. It sounds like, Seth, you were, you were saying that if a school board perhaps doesn't have, um, imp, uh, the process for mediation and imp, and impasse, uh, written out in a contract, like we have, then that portion of century code, um, would apply. But since we do have it specified in our contract, that that second part, that second reference, um, to century code does not apply to us, only the first part, is that correct?
That's, that's kind of, I would be, sorry to interrupt, that's kind of how I would be more so looking at this. I mean, when I'm looking at the impasse statute, I'm focusing on one A and B. We don't, we do have procedures, so I'm, um, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
So, I, I have a thought. Let's, let's keep you on and then if there are any questions, so we don't have to call you back. Um, back to a couple of things that I think we need to discuss here are, if we go back to the table, whether we wait for Mr. Thompson to read through everything, and we haven't discussed this yet either, if we counterfile and what, what that would, and that was discussed on Friday, um, amongst the group, um, and what are, what are the repercussions and considerations of that? I am not advocating for that, but that is, that is something else we do need to consider. Is there anything else that you think we need to, to discuss, Mr. Thompson?
Um, if I could just ask you to repeat just a little bit, um, just a little bit. I missed the, the, the part that you were specifically going through there. For some reason, it got cut out.
Sure. It's because I have braces on and I have trouble talking, so on my teeth.
And I have hearing problems.
There you go. We're a good pair. So, um, so what I'm, at, at this alternative writ of mandamus that I'm looking at, uh, we either resume good faith negotiations, we, or suspend all, any and all efforts to implement mediation until further order of this court, or in the alternative, appear before the courts on October third. So, um, we could go back to the table, uh, at this point. We could wait for you to get your updates and please note that we do have the ability to call special meetings for emergency purposes for, for negotiation. Uh, or we could consider filing a counterclaim. Is that, is that a fair consideration?
Yeah. And, and to be clear, I think what we're looking at is, in, in our filing, we're filing an answer to the petition for writ of mandamus. And so you're, you're basic, we would basically be responding to the, to the briefing saying, "No, Your Honor, this is not right because you need to look at these particular facts and all of those sorts of things." As to the counterclaim part, I, I think there would be, you know, there, there, I think there could be an open question whether or not the, the Education Association has actually been acting in good faith in not putting all of its proposals on the table and, uh, springing them at the very end. So theoretically, I think you could bring up in our briefing to try and point out that we think that, you know, there's, there's a leak in allegation that the association is not, um, acting in good faith, um, through that briefing. So I think that's kind of what we talked about there. But to, to outline, I think you hit it right on the head, I think the chair hit it right on the head, your options are to go back and bargain, move forward, you know, suspend your, your mediation efforts or, uh, wait until I've got my review done, or move forward with the, the proceeding on, on October third.
Very good. I would note that, uh, in David's affidavit, he is trying to establish that we came in with a predetermined, uh, decision to go to impasse since eight of the nine board members were present. And of course, that is in our, in our minutes that I encourage you all to attend just because, uh, for, for support. So that's pretty, I think that's probably the main basis behind this and, and credibility against the board. So let's move forward with some discussion. Mr. Thompson, if you wanna hang on and, and we'll let you, let you go if we think that's appropriate. Okay?
I'm more than willing to hang on, ask any questions as we go if you have to. Thank you.
John, do you wanna start this off or do you have any suggestions?
Um, I really question, I don't see, I don't see any options. I worry about future negotiations with this hanging out there, I think, and us, as soon as we have a chance to thoroughly review materials and proposals and timelines and transcripts and recordings. But I do not think that we would be able to go back to the table.
Jim and Brian?
And I tend to agree with John, and maybe there was one additional reason. I noticed they referenced some meeting in April, might have been one I wasn't at, where they told us they weren't gonna meet with us over the summer and they made it sound like we did that, but I don't think that's the case at all. I think they, the last three sessions, um, have by design, by just slow the process down, to try to force the board to come to their side of whatever issues are prior to the start of the dispute. From my perspective, I think there is no way should we want a negotiated contract to take eight to nine months from start to finish. I think that's unreasonable, it's unhealthy. And I think if we actually capitulated and went back to the table right now, we're just reinforcing that by process alone. And future board members might well be advised to stay out of negotiating, unless you wanna commit to your disservice. So I think it's important that we really establish that a reasonable expectation is to start negotiations in January and be done by the time the schools are all tenured. As ninety plus percent of the schools are prepped, so that's nice.
Brian Nelson?
Yeah, I would agree with you, John and Jim. I think we're at a point here, I don't wanna go back to the table at this point in time. I would just, uh, find out if, I think, just the information Mr. Thompson's gonna find out for us and, and just go forward with that.
Got Rebecca and then Christie. So the, it's stated here that the topic that was not ever discussed, that the FEA, they say they weren't able to bring it up or didn't have the opportunity, it says mainly Article Ten, "Work Year." Where is the, do we have that, um, information, that there was an exchange of topics and how, where is this? I'd like clarity, please.
So in the, uh, the second meeting, I'm asking here, we've, Jim, we've listened to both of those topics, we've discussed negotiations, um, during this session. And one of their bullet points was, which, that both of those are intended to, and if it's still, or if they're, they've been brought during those sessions to whatever they've had that in place, what do they do with it? Um, they have never brought us proposals or been to that topic. Um, from, uh, by going back to the district, no, for instance, on the seat application as well, it was really, I think, our understanding that the April twenty ninth meeting, the FEA brought a portfolio, a folio, and said, knowing that we have only a few more meetings scheduled, we're going to be all of our proposals. And they had some of the proposals in that folio and had it here. And then there were all, again, several times over those subsequent meetings, we're at the end of the meeting, we'd say, is there anything else we ought to discuss? Or, uh, Dr. Jennifer said, we have all of our proposals. And so I think it was very good for us to believe that that had been a base in the debate and that we could, we could, we could.
And so Article Ten, "Work Year" was not in that packet of it?
It was not in that, we need to hold it in that.
That's just a big question, Dr. Gandhi and then Christie, on this.
I'll add on to what John was saying, there's a condition for that as well. The board did actually provide, um, a proposal, Article Ten, for it, which the board eventually pulled back, um, when, if, as, as, as the commentary, there was a lot of, of proposals that were, that were supported. Throughout multiple times in the negotiation session, the FEA says, "Don't just say no. If you don't like something, they'll propose a new, a new proposal." That was a structured avenue. If they had a "Work Year" proposal, they provided that proposal, because it was on their list of topics, but they chose topics. Um, additionally, what I can share is that information that's been shared with us, um, and just through various sources, is that, that "Work Year" proposal, they never, apparently had the opportunity to present, uh, was a, was a proposal to, to reduce the "Work Year" by two days. And that is important to know, because when they purposely decided, and I'm not saying this was part of the strategy, but you're, the fact that they purposely chose not to meet in December, and then start scheduling the next year, that this year started, and then you're proposing to reduce the "Work Year," you all, you're only going to do this for two years, you can't change the schedule at any time. So I don't wanna speculate, but I just want to know what the options, and those are the parties that.
And that would be ineffective time to have a "Car" proposal, to the board's proposal. That, in my opinion, would have been the appropriate time, Christie.
I just wanna note that, John, I also agree with you. I think it would be very, um, negative for us as a negotiating team moving forward. And I believe, although the culture concerns me, I have had teachers come to me and say, "I just wish this would be done." Nothing derogatory towards us. So they, I feel that, there's some of the teachers that I'm just very understanding of it, but I feel that our credibility moving forward as negotiators would be extremely limited, uh, if we were to go back to the table.
There was some discussion last Friday when our lawyers were talking about possible filings against the FEA and, and I shared at that time, I think it's best...
So they, I feel that, there's some of the teachers that I'm just very understanding of it, but I feel that our credibility moving forward as negotiators would be extremely limited, uh, if we were to go back to the table. There was some discussion last Friday when our lawyers were talking about possible filings against the FEA. And, and I shared at that time, I think it's best for us to take the high road and just answer the risks and, um, and try to move forward for relationship purposes.
If I could add one thing to, what we're trying to do is to go to mediation. I mean, we're not, we're not trying to, we're not at a point where you're trying to implement last and final offers right now. It's just, you know, if you put the whole thing in context, you know, what we're saying toward impasse, and we're hoping to get some mediators involved to try and work through these issues. So I think the point we're also going, assuming the board wants to move forward with this, I think the point we're going to be making is mediation is an opportunity to, to be heard and to settle and to, you know what I mean? To, to discuss a variety of different things. So, um, you know, it's, I just think it's worth noting that we're not, you know, standing on the cusp of, uh, unilaterally implementing contracts.
Right.
Very good point.
Brian is the superintendent to the school, to the school districts in, in North Dakota, and so he's got a lot of history negotiating, as does David Paulson, so, okay. Further discussion for tonight? I see David touching his mic.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, there's a, there's a very good chance that we could leave this. I mean, there's no, there's certainly nothing saying that, that, uh, the judge is going to find us stable. Is that going to make the relationship between the board and the court worse? You know, they're going to be, they're going to be gloating if they feel that they force a back to the negotiating. Do the, they're going to be, feel even more empowered if they win this court case. I guess, rather than looking at, you know, the right or wrong, do you think there's something to improve the relationship between the board and the, the particular, the, the negotiating? It has gotten, I have never seen Fargo's negotiation, ever happened, in a way, they just progressed through this, this course of rotation. Each of the last three sessions, we've been, you know, not smart, but I thought we, I thought we, after very, very professional, that I said, the FEA is taking more and more names, we're going to think of this. I think we should, I think we should, we're putting on this public, I'm just trying to think of how it's going to be best for this negotiation to succeed. Whether it's best to go back to the table or to continue with this court, I honestly don't know.
John Rodenbacher?
If execute a gamble, we move closer to others, starting with the board, we share it with you here, but it's from all out there. We've been over the path of this, especially since I've been chair, to do our best to make this a more collaborative environment, to reach out to them, to find what we can do, to make this not self contentious. I think no matter what we do, they have a strategy of, uh, using, and this is just my influence of an out there, they're using our media-rich environment, our status as a premier, um, district in the state, to, uh, create an argument for the importance and purpose of future negotiations. And that they have an important role in, in, and to do that, they're making us the enemy, so if they have somebody to protect. And if we were in a collaborative environment, and we're all sitting in kumbaya in circles, and we came out of this, they're, they're not going to have that. And it's not just, um, if we're united, I believe it's a national strategy and tactic. It's, this is the new reality, in my opinion. And we can continue to each other, I mean, we should continue to each other, I mean, we should begin our conversation and say, "We, we don't want to do this. We don't want, we don't want to be fighting this. We're all serving on the sword for the right reasons, of educating our kids, supporting our teachers, of having excellent education, best in the world." But again, unless they come back and lead us, we can only do, we can only control our actions. And I don't think going back to the table is anything but encourage them to do something. If we do need to stand up and say, "We want a collaborative relationship," that's, again, it was, you talked to the last point, why we wanted to go to mediation was to stop us from buddy, that after we had some significant problems, and find somebody that could help us build back together, with the respect of our first set of eyes, and help us move forward in this bond with each other. And then doing this, going back after this, is better.
Thank you. I've got Brian Nelson, Rebecca Thompson.
Um, Dave, I don't, I honestly don't view this as a winning and losing. If we go through this channel and we could possibly lose, I don't view this as losing. I just view it as, he's going to look at all of the data and stuff like that and see if, if, if we're doing it right. And if we're not, he'll let us know by the twenty fourth, or whatever the date was. And if we are doing it right, then this is a, this is the process that we all go to, rather than sit and arguing publicly and making us all look bad. I think disappoints me that staff views that we don't support them. I've, for two years now, have gone on record, not on record, oh yeah, on record, that for property tax increases, our property taxes have increased a lot of dollars, look it up, in the last two years. I totally support education and what we're doing here, and have not voted against it. And, um, so I think this is, again, part of the process, and I don't view this as winning and losing at all. I, I think, I just want to, um, mediation, this is where we're at, we're at, we want to get some mediation in here because we're not, we're not coming together here to get an agreement. And if one side sees that and the other side doesn't, that's how I look at it.
Thank you, then. Rebecca and then Dr. Gandhi.
So I'm in support of, of, Seth receiving the information, going through it and providing us with, uh, further recommendations. Mediation is a collaborative way of working, even though we might, everyone might not agree, but it is a collaborative way of, of revol, uh, resolving disputes of all kinds. And, uh, mediation does not directly result in a decision in court. And so if the desire by the FEA is to get a court decision, um, you know, mediation isn't going to directly get that way. And that, that could be, uh, part of what the FEA is interested in, is getting a decision in court, because it, it can start to set the precedent for, um, how negotiations go down the road, you know, state, statewide, with different districts. So, uh, just wanted to put that out there. But I'm supportive of us, uh, I feel like we're not going to get any farther. I feel like even in offering up more meetings, uh, and it, I just feel like we'll end up back in the same place. If I didn't think that we would, I, I'd say, "Hey, let's go for it." I'm starting to sense some consensus in this discussion. Um, Dr. Gandhi?
I think we should share, it's old, you know, it's, there's no one direction, uh, there's, there's also that. There's, there's no one, even last year, when the project was in negotiations, and ratified, here we are, we're amazing. Um, we're negotiating again, and we're just desperate. So I don't think we should. Testing? All right. Um, I think I'll just wrap it up by saying is that there is value by going through the process, because the person may be a cop on it, whereas everything else is a process, you're going to, you're going to, you have a process, and you're going to, you're going to.
Brandy, I don't know if you can hear me? Okay. Can you hear me? Yes? Okay. Well, I haven't talked yet, so I thought I better make sure that I put my, I totally agree with, um, most of you guys with the whole waiting for attorney to look at all of our stuff. I was out of tune with those meetings, and I'm sorry, but I don't feel that there's any reason to sit and bash somebody who's trying to get money. I mean, I'm sorry, I, I, I just don't feel that any part of this negotiation by their side was in a professional manner at all. And that's just my. Okay? Christie? I just have one other thing that, as I was speaking about this, I recall one of our meeting sessions where we brought them a proposal that had two choices. And they did not like two choices. They said, "Give us your proposal, we don't want to pick." And so when we talk about giving them our best offer and giving them our best final offer, they haven't been willing to, uh, look at two different options. They wanted us to give it forward to them right away, and I think sometimes they would prefer it that way so they can perhaps say no. And having to be more of the negotiations back and forth, but that's just something I recall as we were sitting. Okay, I, again, I think I'm sensing a consensus. I want to say two things. I think we need to consider the motivation behind this risk. What do they really want to come out of this? And where do they want this, uh, this discussion to be held? At, at the courtroom, or in the public, or back at the negotiation table? Um, and I lost my train of thought, but it was a really good one, I think. Um, I, I, I agree with every, everything, everything's been said, but it's, but so far, I, I know what I was going to say. I do feel, uh, we are accused of taking, being unprepared and taking too long in caucuses to discuss, to, to discuss their proposals. And I conversely view that as somebody who is seriously considering their proposals and taking the time and going in with an open mind and not a, a parameter on, this is as far as we're going to go and then we're done. Uh, so I commend the negotiations team for taking the time in the caucuses to take that time, to seriously consider those, and I think that demonstrates good faith negotiations. Okay, um, am I sensing consensus that we are going to wait for Mr. Thompson to receive our information? Does anybody disagree? Okay. Are there any actions that anybody anticipates coming out of this session, executive session? Okay, I think we are ready to adjourn this executive session, and then we will return to regular session after a couple of minutes. It is seven thirty-five, and all of the mem, the people in the room that were here when we started remain. Uh, this concludes this executive session of the Fargo School Board. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
I call this regular meeting of the Fargo School Board back to order. Uh, we are on agenda item number six C, operational plan, memo number thirty-two. Anybody want to start that interd, that discussion? Dr. Gandhi?
Um, this operational plan was brought to you at the last meeting, uh, for the first reading. Since then, we've had no changes. So this is just coming to you for final approval.
Christie?
I would move that we recommend that two thousand nineteen, twenty operational plan be approved as provided.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Rodenbacher?
I just want to call out one item here, and I usually avoid us.
I just want to call out one item here, and I usually avoid us getting into the weeds of these things, but, and I know we had a first reading, but on the second reading here, I want to call out on page seven, towards the bottom, under the assigned to technology, implementing multi-factor authentication to enhance the network security protections of all FPS staff. This is a major risk mitigation that we should be aware of. What this does is it prevents somebody from guessing or stealing your password and using that to log in as you and misusing your account. This requires something in addition to passwords. And I think, I, I hope that this is also going to apply to the board. I know we are high-value targets. I have received spearfishing emails that are pretending to come from Superintendent Gandhi or other members of the board, asking for quick and immediate action for me to respond to them. This prevents us from having our credentials stolen as well. Applying this to all staff is going to be a major undertaking, and, and I applaud the district for taking this on, and I'm looking forward to the outcomes of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your expertise. Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor to approve the presented Operational Plan. Okay, seeing no other questions, Ann Marie, we're ready. Johnson.
Yes.
Knudsen.
Yes.
Brian Nelson.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Rodenbiker.
Yes.
Ulrich.
Yes.
Anni.
Yes.
President Nelson.
Yes, motion carries. Good luck on, on your ambush- ambitious Operational Plan. Onto the next item, a long-range facility plan approval. Dr. Gandhi or Planning Chair Kristi Ulrich?
Strategic plan.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Strategic plan reapproval. Dr. Gandhi, would you like to introduce that?
Sure, we brought the strategic plan for a first reading at the August 27th meeting. The bulleted changes in your, in your memo are the changes that we had brought to the August 27th meeting. Since then, we went back and we, while we, we took our indicators, there was a conversation around making them more measurable and what they look like. So we added some language to make those indicators more measurable, took the strategic plan back to planning on September 6th, and are now asking for the final approval for this strategic plan as presented.
President Knudsen, I move that we approve the strategic plan as approved, or as provided, rather.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second discussion.
President Nelson, I, I will be voting yes on this. There is wonderful detail in here, and I wanted to highlight one item here regarding cultural proficiency at Strategic Initiative 3. I, I just, I think that it's wonderful that we have initiatives where we are paying attention and monitoring where we are as a district on cultural proficiency. And it talks about cultural proficiency being a mindset, a worldview, a way of a person or an organization makes assumptions for effectively describing, responding to, and planning for issues that arise in diverse environments. It talks about, as a result of our efforts, students and staff will accept and respect the diversity of gender, race, culture, and age differences. And I think it's so important during this time that we, that we have these words in our strategic plan. And there are so many things that we could be highlighting here that's good, but I wanted to speak to that as one highlight. Additionally, there are some edits that I have found in this document. Forgive me, I'm an editor and a writer. So I have found some commas and some Rs and, and is, and Is, and you know, so grammatical and some punctuation items. I've talked to Ann Marie about it, and Robin and Rupak, so I will be forwarding my, my hard copy to Ann Marie. None of those edits have anything to do with the, the strategic plan in and of itself, won't change any of our initiatives, but I want you to know that I will be forwarding that to Ann Marie.
Does the board feel that that needs an amended motion?
I would move to amend the motion, include Rebecca's grammatical changes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Would that be considered a friendly amendment, Ann Marie?
No, it has a first and a second, so I will note it as an official amendment that we'll need to vote on first.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment to add Rebecca's grammatical edits to this document?
Thank you for your work.
I see no hands. Ann Marie, would you like to call a roll on the amendment?
Johnson.
Yes.
Knudsen.
Yes.
Brian Nelson.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Rodenbiker.
Yes.
Ulrich.
Yes.
Anni.
Yes.
President Nelson.
Yes, the amended motion carries. Now we are back to our original motion of approving the strategic plan document as presented with some minor grammatical efforts. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I think we're ready to take a vote on this as well.
Knudsen.
Yes.
Brian Nelson.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Rodenbiker.
Yes.
Ulrich.
Yes.
Anni.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
President Nelson.
Yes, we have an approved strategic plan. Next item is 6E, the Long Range Facility Plan, memo number 34. Are there any introductions that are necessary here, Dr. Gandhi?
Sure, the Long Range Facilities Plan just kind of outlines potential opportunities for the district as we look at, look at our facilities and where we want to head in the long range. This was discussed in term, with our planning committee as well. So I do want to just refer to some language that you'll see in the Long Range Facilities Plan, although there may be a timeline or some specific projects have been outlined. On page 12, right before we get to the timeline, we do say that essentially not everything in here is concrete for sure. There are some factors that could depend on the timing of a project, or whether we engage in a project or not, such as the district finances, and we're going to use this to model our long-range financial plan, or other conversations that the board may have as well. So although this could be a vision for where we're headed, every individual project in here would have to go into greater detail, come to planning, and that doesn't mean that everything in here is going to happen exactly as is, because this is just more for a guiding document.
President Nelson, I would move that we approve, that we approve the updated Long Range Facility Plan as provided.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Rodenbiker.
I don't know if this is the proper document for this, and I hesitate to bring it up because of unrelated matters, but looking at the guiding principles for facility decisions, I am wondering if we need to, as a board, consider the climate impact of our buildings, and as we are considering possibly building new facilities in the future, requirements on green building and codifying those into our guiding principles for facility decisions. I don't have a proposal right now, but I wanted to bring this up for discussion, and what would be the proper place for those sorts of things.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we do have through our, our Jim Freese departments, they do build things to LEED standards, however, we're not LEED certified because that is quite costly. I am not sure if that is, is worded anywhere in policy. Perhaps somebody from administration can fill us in?
Yeah, I think, I don't know if that would necessarily belong in the Long Range Facilities Plan, or in certain, maybe if we have documents that talk about the standard for which we build our buildings, and what, what that looks like. I would have to probably dive deeper with the Maintenance Operations Department and say, where does that fit in?
And to, Jim, I'll let you go ahead.
Sure.
I'll just share some old background. There, there was a gentleman on this board by the name of Don Faulkner, who I think, I think he was actually head of the Architecture Department for a number of years at NDSU, and a huge believer in LEED certification. And of course, one of the things he explained is you want to be really careful about making that a rule, because it's very difficult, especially with older facilities that are getting remodeled, to necessarily meet LEED certification without borrowing all the money at Fort Knox. So I think i- if we wanted to do something to that end, it might be in one of the next items we're going to look at, where we're talking about our EL 16 for facility approval. But I'd caution us, because the LEED certification can change in the future, and it may mean we got a policy that we're going to have to violate. I, I think rather than put a hard rule in place, I think the whole notion that we want to be environmentally friendly, not just in our footprint, but in our operating print, is more important in my mind.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up as a, more a discussion I thought was appropriate with this particular document. I will be voting for this, and thank you for your time.
Good comment. Thank you, Rebecca.
And just a note, it is, it is good to see that the work from our task forces is, is in a document called the Long Range Facility Plan, so that the people that have been involved in our community and our district see that we have a commitment to moving forward with the work that they've done.
Brian Nelson.
Good point, Rebecca.
Some of the changes that did come out of the task force that should be highlighted is under our guiding principles. The number seven, the preference is to have middle school to high school attendance boundary feeder system. That was a result of that conversation, as were the, the shifts in the sizes of middle school and high schools. So that, that was taken to heart throughout this conversation. A couple other questions, there was, I fielded a question prior to the meeting about how this fit into the approval of the Long Range Financial Plan, and you did answer the question about pre-approved or post-approved building projects.
Correct, and, and the Long Range Financial Plan, I believe, will be coming in, in an upcoming board meeting. It's scheduled to be presented to our planning committee on September 17th. I think Jackie was almost waiting on this document to kind of build that document. We're almost in a chicken and an egg situation, knowing where we want, what we want to prioritize as a district, and what could be as a guiding document, to kind of build the Long Range Financial Plan. So you will see this feed that plan, which will be presented to planning on the 17th, and will come to the board after that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I see no hands. Are we ready for a roll call vote? Ann Marie.
Brian Nelson.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Rodenbiker.
Yes.
Ulrich.
Yes.
Anni.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Knudsen.
Yes.
President Nelson.
Yes, motion carries. Onto item 6F on the agenda, board policies. We have three policies that the Governance Committee is bringing forth tonight. They are all, all somewhat related. EL 16 talks about adding a facilities, let's see here, facilities executive limitations policy to our, our board policies, and as a result, sorry, that was a result of the advice that we got from the Aspen Group, recommendations. Related to that is a proposed change in EL 9 that pulls out some, one line, number 14, and moves that to the proposed EL 16, which is the facilities, new facilities proposal. And then finally, the last related piece is changing the calendar and adding when we regularly review EL 16. So I would entertain a motion for one or all of these at the same time. Jim.
I move adoption of EL 16 to be approved, and the changes in EL 9 and GP 8E is outlined in memo 36 and memo 37.
Second. Okay. Motion's on the floor. Any questions or discussion? Okay, I see no hands. Ann Marie.
Yes.
Rodenbiker.
Yes.
Ulrich.
Yes.
Anni.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Knudsen.
Yes.
Brian Nelson.
Yes.
President Nelson.
Yes, motion carries. A little backup, thank you to the planning committee for, this was a lot of work and a lot of preparation for tonight's meeting, so we appreciate your efforts. Onto item seven of the agenda, and that is board reports. We would start with appointing North Dakota School Boards Association convention delegates. Ann Marie, would you like to provide some history on that for us?
Usually the board president takes volunteers. I, I don't know if you passed out the sheet that shows who's all planning, it's the next one on your stack there.
Got it.
Who's all planning to go. At this time, all board members, except David Paulson, have indicated they plan to attend the annual conference in October. We, as the size of our district, we have five delegates at the delegate convention. Jim Johnson would already be a delegate for this, because of his role at the state, so we wouldn't mark him down for a delegate for FPS. So tonight you need to appoint five people who are willing to serve as a delegate. You would need to be able to attend the delegates' assembly, so if for some reason your schedule will not allow for that, you need to be able to attend. Anyone else who is attending, I will designate as an alternate, just in case something changes with registration, then another one of you will be able to step in.
John.
I'm willing to be a delegate.
Okay, can I have a show of hands? So I've got John Rodenbiker, Brian Nelson, Rebecca Knudsen, I'm taking in that order. I'd be happy to serve as a delegate as well.
One more.
One more. What?
I can't be a delegate.
I know. Kristi. Okay. Kristi raised her hand next. Brandy, just a little bit, you need to be a little quicker on the draw. That doesn't mean you can't.
Can you get help?
Oh, okay. Perfect. Okay, you got that, Ann Marie?
Yes, thank you. I will get everybody registered and have those people noted as delegates. Also, if you please review what Robin passed out. If you see that I have something down incorrectly for you, as far as your plans, and that includes what we'd sign you up for, in addition to what you would need for lodging, that would be great, because I plan to make those arrangements tomorrow.
Great, thank you. We just learned that Robin cannot multitask. Okay. Next item on the agenda is committee liaison and correspondence report. Let's see here, let's start with Mr. Paulson, this, this round.
Back on the 29th, I attended the Governance Committee meeting. It's also not directly a liaison assignment, but I wanted to share that that evening, I attended the, a panel discussion sponsored by, or hosted by the District 44 Legislatures on the topic of school safety. They had a student, a teacher, an administrator, a parent, a school resource officer, and a counselor on that panel. They had, it was, they had some prepared questions, they took questions from the audience, there was a fairly good turnout, mostly people in that district. I thought there were good questions, good discussion, it was really interesting to hear the frontline reports, the counselors, what, the counselor said something that I thought was really important, in that our public schools are still the safest place for our kids during the day. I, and I also appreciated that, that those legislators and the panelists recognized and made a distinction between school safety being about events like school shooters, and school safety being the events that our, some of our teachers are facing every day regarding emotional and behavioral disturbances in the classroom. And I thank them for having that discussion on the panel, it was, it was good. And then also, if you'll indulge me one more time, on this past Friday, the 6th, I attended the First Fridays at B event, that is a monthly meeting about food issues in our community, and this particular one was regarding school lunch issues. There were three people on this panel, Cara Glow from the Morehead School Board, Dana Reith from West Fargo's Nutrition Department, and then our own Greg Gefra, who is our relatively new operations manager in nutrition. And it was really interesting and good, it was a very full theater, probably 100 to 200 people in there, who learned about the issues around serving thousands of hot nutritious meals to all of our students every day. Some discussions about food waste, food safety, and the cost of the program. Some discussions about food waste, food safety, and the cost of the program, and I was really impressed by Mr. Gefro's passion for feeding our kids good, fresh lunches. And related to that, there's been some considerations about the cost for lunches and the school debt that's building up, and so I would encourage people to be aware of, potentially attend a fundraiser this coming Sunday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Sanctuary Event Center. It's called Lunch Aid Fargo Bands for School Kids, and there will be bands playing, it's a $10 donation at the door, and the donations are being coordinated by our own foundation, so that all of the donations go to the cause and then is being picked out by middlemen. So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. When you mean that discussion was at B, do you mean Theater B?
At Theater, yes. First Fridays at B is at Theater B, Theater B in Morehead.
And I believe that Dr. Gandhi will present, be presenting at the Sunday event as well.
That's correct, just helping kick off the event.
Very good. Thank you. Rebecca?
I was at Governance as well, on the 29th, and last Friday, observed at Planning. This morning, at the Chamber Eggs and Issues, and I mentioned to Rupak and Anne Marie, a fabulous presentation by all three superintendents, and really, really great questions from the folks in attendance, and when we have someone that says, what can we do for you, I think that's pretty great. We don't get that very often, so, in fact, none of the presenters do, I think, at those. I bet everyone that would present at Eggs and Issues would love someone in the audience to say, what can we do to help you? So thank you so much for representing us very, very well. I will be at Hawthorne to scoop ice cream, or whatever we're doing with ice cream, ice cream bars, is that what it is? And there is, I did send a message to Betsy regarding a doodle poll for the Communications Committee, so that we can make sure that we have our meeting and do some work before we have our next board meeting on the 24th. I wanted to mention in regard to the incident at Fargo North, the safety incident that we've heard about in our community, just, a full disclosure, I have two students, I have my own children at Fargo North, and so we did receive a phone call that evening with a recording by Mr. Dolan and email, and just wanted to say, I was very impressed with, with the timing and with the wording, the verbiage that was used, just, you know, considering that situation, boy, there was a lot of work that the folks up there took on, or had to take on, and here at the district level too, so thank you very much for that. My one daughter swims up at North, and that coach also, Talia, took on some communication with those students and emailed the parents, and it was just top of the line in terms of, you know, addressing the situation, and talking about that, kind of the balance of not taking too much time, but I'm not going to say that something didn't happen that our kids might be wrestling with, and really encouraging us to be, she was just a leader, and it was so good to see in a situation that was, you know, challenging for lots of people, but I wanted to let you know that I'm really proud of our administration, and I'm proud of that coach. Thank you.
Brian Nelson?
I just had the planning last Friday, and then I'm going to scoop ice cream as well on Thursday, and looking forward to that as we did last year, so that's it.
Brandy?
Me as well, I'm also going to scoop ice cream, or serve the ice cream bars, whatever they're going to have on Thursday, and then I also scheduled my meeting with Mr. Dolan over at North. That's it.
Thank you. Kristi?
I was at Eggs and Issues this morning, and I thought the format change was exceptional. It was very refreshing and much more enjoyable for listening, and I think it's nice to see those comparisons between the communities, because we are so similar. I had planning on the 6th, and I plan to be handing out ice cream tomorrow, or on Thursday.
Thank you. Jim?
I was at Eggs and Issues too, and the program was great, but once again, they failed to serve toast with the eggs, which is something the chamber needs to learn. Last week, I was out in Bismarck for a day on the pre-K-12 Visioning Steering Committee, our major focus at that meeting was really looking at the Native American population in our state, looking at the issues that they're facing, really trying to identify what those issues are, because they are much different in different parts of the state. And clearly, mobility wasn't even on anybody's list out there until I brought it up and said, do you have mobility data on how long the average student stays in whatever district they're at, and how many times they might be moving? So they're going to do a little more research, try and really identify what are things that we as a state could put in policy to hopefully try to narrow the achievement gap farther. And I'm happy to tell you, we actually have narrowed it in the last two years, and I think by all the data I saw, North Dakota is number two in the nation in terms of narrowing the gap from Native American students to the rest of the general population, behind Oklahoma, which has a huge, huge Indian nation. So I think we're doing some things right in our state, but we have a long way to go still, but we really need to identify what are the issues these students are facing, and then what can we do to address those issues if we can. And I think our next meeting is scheduled for November, they haven't given a hard date yet. I was at Governance, I was at Planning, and for those of you on GAC, we, you might want to hold October 8th, that will be a Tuesday, we have a school board meeting that day. Right now, we're tentatively thinking 7:30 in the morning on October 8th will be our first GAC committee meeting of this particular school year, and that's it.
Thank you. Good reports. My report, meetings that I were at, was at were Governance. We had a special board meeting on September 4th, September 6th was a planning meeting, September 10th, which was this morning, I was at the Chamber breakfast as well. I can't say anything any better than everybody else that was there, it was an excellent breakfast, and I fielded a lot of great comments. I have been in contact with my liaison schools, in fact, I'm working with Horace Mann and coordinating a scholastic book donation from the Masonic Lodge, it's because I have a couple of friends there. Side notes, I was also at Centennial Hawthorne and Lincoln. And then for the debrief on the highlights from the Governance Committee, our next meeting is September 26th, some highlights that we had there were to have the Communications Committee review the reporting form for NSBA reports, so we had some healthy discussion over that. And then that committee also directed me to propose some new language for the school liaison philosophy, so I know you'll be waiting on the edge of your seats for that, and that will be presented at the next Governance Committee, and of course, Anne Marie will help me. I can't take credit for all of that. Back to the President's Report, the typed version, we talked about the social, sounds like we'll have a good turnout, and then the upcoming meetings are, all there listed for your viewing and events, I think, I think we're good to go. Any other questions on the reports? Jim, with the native achievement gap, are those reports available through DPI, do you feel?
I don't, well, I certainly can get my hands on it again. DPI would have it, but there's actually a consulting firm that put together all that data, but I'll reach out and get a copy of it.
I would guess that you might be interested in that, Rebecca.
Yes, my plan was to follow up with you, Jim, so if you're able to get your hands on that.
$25.
Yeah, thank you. Ice cream bar.
Ice cream bar. Okay, I think we've got through the entire agenda. Our next meeting of the, the regular meeting of the school board will be September 24th at 5:30, and right here in this room, and I adjourn this evening's meeting.